For this time to say that you feel as a council member here as board members to take up the business of the Board of Education and the education of our students here in Hawthorne, Michigan. Father asks that you remind us while we're here as a board and be with our decisions at the back. And Father, would you do praise in the Lord, in your son's name we pray?
Great morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Everybody's thad in. Come on, I forgot my glass. Okay. Alright, looks like everybody's present. You want to read them, read everybody off?
Word, present, Berg, present, Collins, present, Cretemore, present, Hill, present, Lawson, present, Wilson, present, Miller, present, Parker, present, Luther, present.
Okay, thank you. Before we get started, Mr. Miller's got some presentation for some individuals he'd like to make. Go ahead, Director.
As many of you who are, we had the ribbon cutting ceremony today at the new alternate learning, East LaFollette Learning Academy. Is that not right? It will be located now at the old East LaFollette School, we saved that one section, it'll be moved from Ridgewood, it currently is at the high school. We didn't get the building done in time for them to move into in August, but we have the ribbon cutting today, it is finished. We still like some phone lines to get in, but for all practical purposes. So what we're doing tonight is we like just to recognize a few people for all of what they've done to help us make this talk project a success. And then mainly, we have a plaque to present to the building trades class at the high school that did an outstanding job working on this building. So I would like to just say that it's been a privilege for me as building committee chairman to be able to do something that a lot of counties are not able to do. We acted as our own general contractor. I want to thank Ms. Marlowe first and foremost, he helped us get approval for that way back about a year and a half ago. And we want to thank him because about that we couldn't even get started. I want to thank Ms. Ridner, Ms. Sharon Ridner, when she was interim director, we came to her with a vision of moving it up to the East LaFollette School. And she came on board and supported security funding. And then Mr. Poston, after he took over, he's taken it and hopefully we'll have a very good learning academy program separate from the main system that we can have these kids without falling through cracks. But I'd just like to again thank the building trades students. There were several students that worked on it, a lot of them graduated, so they're not here tonight. There were some up at the ribbon cutting. And again, they started this thing and we demolitioned it, they tore concrete walls out, concrete floors, and they just did an excellent job. And then also the maintenance department, the maintenance department came in and they finished up what the building trades class did. Then we had a couple contractors that came in and just did some stuff that we were trying to get done so that we could try to meet August deadline and get through any of those students. But Mr. David Miller's here and I'll be calling you up in just a second. He's the instructor at Campbell County High School, Mr. Barney Gores. We'd like to thank Ms. Amy Hammack and the criminal justice students, they came up and cleaned the building for us, did an outstanding job over there. Again, the Board of Education, maintenance department, again, Ms. Sharon Ridner, Ms. Rhonda Douglas who processed all the POs, got them over to the finance office, did a great job on that. Mr. Jack Cannon, who went up and he pulled his own phone lines to where we didn't have to pay to have that done. Miss Gail Parks, who was the intermediary for me to help get everything coordinated and to get the POs over to Rhonda and just did an outstanding job communicating with them. Again, Mr. Poston, just picking up the alternative program and having the vision to advance it, have a good program here and not just replace punishable kids, but also have some amazing transition classes where they can go to and be able to get ahead before they go to high school. My fellow board members, without their support, we couldn't have this. And Mr. Chairman Mike Ork was instrumental in helping us and supporting us, I want to thank you. Johnny Berg, he helped me at his capacity, working with the city, we had him to help us on the great work in the back, it cost us very little money for that. Mr. Dwayne Baird, who did a lot of masonry, Mr. Dean Henley did some of the flooring and hanging doors, helped us out there. Mr. Jack Wilson, he hauled our gravel for us, he did a pretty good deal on that. I'd like to thank Mr. Dennis Potter, donated all the gravel, that we didn't have to purchase any gravel for that, and that was a tremendous saving on behalf of taxpayers there. Mr. DeDon Mocheers, who was by this one side of the church, he would come and get on and empty on, did charge anything for that. Ms. Karen Barchar, the fire marshal, she was very impressed that we had taken this project home, that we were doing it to save the taxpayers money. Because if we went through a general contract with this project aside from the parking lot, we'd probably cost over $400,000. We did it for a little over $200,000, and I think that's saving the taxpayers money. The city of LaFollette, Mayor Mike Sanfield, Mr. Jim Mullins, works for the city, Fred Teening and Ayers, Dixie Ruth and Robyn's guys. And all areas part of our local business, involved as much stuff as possible. We also bided locally, we asked people that did, Pete and Ayers, if we could try to stay local and give them this money to work on it, so it worked out very well. So we're thankful, I want to thank Michael Brady, who's the architect, who drew up the plan and submitted it to the state and worked with us on all of that. Again, I want to thank Ken Davis, who'll come up, I have a plaque on behalf of the Board of Education. And we also, when we had our meeting back in January when we started this, we all agreed that we would make a donation to the building trades class. So we have a check here for $4,000 that will go into the building trades program. And the plaque reads, "Camel County Board of Education recognizes Camel County High School general building trades in appreciation of their dedication and workmanship in construction of the East LaFollette Learning Academy, September 11, 2012." Director Miller, Building Committee Chairman Mike Ork, and Chairman of the Board, and Mr. Barney Poston, Director's students.
Younger brother, right?
Yeah, he's my younger brother. I'd like to say something.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to thank the board, and I'd like to thank the superintendent, the director, and Ms. Ridner and Ms. Wheeler, and all my colleagues not here. When we was approached with this project, I knew it was going to be a major operation for 16-year-old kids. But also, our program has leaned more to the commercial side of it. And our standards and our topics are more towards the commercial path. Now, we've really been active in residential construction, but this was a great opportunity for my students to see how commercial. And we also, in our program, we certify our students. When they do their performance task, which we did, we, I'm shooting off, we done it off. But it really will help them later on, and I appreciate it, everybody.
We thank you, yeah, thank you so much. Thank you, Director. Before I forget it too, welcome Danny.
Thank you.
Danny Wilson, first district, first board meeting tonight, so we've got to be easy on him. Dale called me before we came in, he wants to spend about four or five minutes with us, so we need to go into executive session if we can. Okay, we apologize for that delay, we had to meet with our attorney. Every year in September, the first thing we're supposed to do is select a new chairman and vice chairman to the board. And before we do that, I want to tell the board that I appreciate the last two years that I've served as your chairman, and it's been fun. We went through a lot of good experiences together, a lot of bad experiences together. But I do appreciate that, and I want to tell you guys at this time that I'd prefer that my name not be offered up this time, I'd prefer that someone else do it this time. Out of respect, I appreciate you guys very much. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Poston, and he's going to ask for nominations.
Mr. Jack, you've got me through this thing. Alright, this time the floor is open for nominations, Gary, Mike, or...
I don't need John Park.
I make a motion for nominations cease.
Second.
At this time, you have to vote on whether or not nominations cease in July 7th to make that a vote.
Got you.
Let's get your number.
I got it, man. You can vote for yourself, man.
Right now, you're just voting that the nominations cease.
That's right.
Now you'll have the vote on Josh to be the chairman, you just need six to...
Orick, yes. Berg, yes. Collins, yes. Cretemore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes.
I'm sitting really close to you, man.
Hill, yes. Parker, yes.
Good, that's jammed, jammed votes.
I'm getting ahead of myself, man, here we go. I'm just glad it's on. I'm just glad it's on. Can we do that acclamation? I had to wait a second, changed my mind.
Now you clap.
A little premature.
Orick, yes. Berg, yes. Collins, yes. Cretemore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Wilson, yes. Miller, yes. Parker, yes.
Josh?
Yes, sir.
As your first action there, when I can make a decision. I can leave this the way it is, and Mike would have to be the voter for the pro or he had, and still say, "No, not his name, you can still vote in your flock." Or you can give me about two minutes, three minutes, and I can switch you and Mike's lot around and have swap the votes.
I can just vote with my controller and just leave it at that.
And I'll...
Before we do the vice chairman, I just want to say thank you to the board, it's an awesome responsibility, unanimous vote. This is a good board, we've done a lot of good things, and I'm honored to have all nine of your votes, and I promise y'all do the best job I can as your chairman, I appreciate it. Alright, the floor is now open for nominations for vice chairman. Mr. Collins. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded for Johnny Cretemore.
Make a motion, the nomination cease, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded for nominations to cease. So we're voting on the motion to cease nominations for vice chairman, go ahead and vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? If not, Madam Clerk, reveal the vote.
Orick, yes. Berg, yes. Collins, yes. Cretemore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Wilson, yes. Miller, yes. Parker, yes. Luther, yes.
So the nominations are ceased, now we're voting on Johnny Cretemore to be vice chairman of the board. And you can cast your vote. Any member wish to change their vote? If not, reveal the vote.
I wasn't so quick on that one, Johnny.
Johnny Cretemore, you're recognized, for any words?
Just like to thank the board on the votes, and I agree with Josh, we got a good board, and continue to work, all work together. We'll make this a good board and a better school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cretemore. Next on your agenda is recognition of guests, we thank everyone who's out tonight, we appreciate it, and again, apologize for the long delay there in our executive session. Item three, approval of concisen agenda, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion approved.
Motion made by Mr. Orick, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Scott Hill. Any discussion? If not, cast your vote. Any member wish to change their vote? If not, reveal the vote. Next on the agenda, approval of regular agenda.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the regular agenda with the subtraction of item 8D. Need some more information, that's the Ridgewood property for next month, maybe we talk about it next month, and remove the entire section 11.
So the motion is made to approve the regular agenda, removing section 8D, sale, sales auction of Ridgewood Elementary property and section 11.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have one concern, why are we approving the budget amendment first, before the cameras, before we even approve, put them out to bid?
Mr. Marlowe, I see we're requesting bids, requesting permission to advertise for bids tonight, so...
Yeah, and we're approving the money before we even approve to bid them.
I can't give you an intercepted order of operations on the agenda, it's always been inter fours amendments, review of bids, request permission to advertise. Theoretically, however, before you would authorize something to be solicited for, you would have appropriation of the due until I... Money first, everything will seem...
So you're saying from now on, if we want to bid something, we got to approve the money before we bid? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that, yeah, in all situations, you have to have, should have appropriation for you act them. It doesn't have to be specific. In this instance, you're approving additional funds to provide for the cameras. If in fact, this was something that was just funded from capital outlay money, you wouldn't have an amendment and you would be able to authorize...
Oh, so this is not coming out of capital outlay? It's coming out of line out of...
Yes, yeah.
Didn't he say it comes out of capital outlay?
It don't have to have it.
It's crazy, that being...
Second amendment, and it uses...
It doesn't matter then.
$29,000 for the sale of the old Ridgewood property.
Stoneford.
Stoneford, and also uses about $17,000 from other savings, evaluation testing, contract services, and the biggest one being workers' compensation insurance and building, 76,000.
So, Mr. Hill, I know we've talked about this in the meeting, is the cameras going to cost 41.5?
Well, we don't know, we've not got three bids. The bid, Larry got one bid, and it was 30, the bid that he had, what was it, 35, Larry?
We're still going to get, even if we prove the money being funded, we're still going to bid.
Sure.
Is that right?
Yes. Yeah.
Then they'll come back next year.
Yeah, we have to prove the bids before we can do anything. Yeah. It's not actually approving the, we've got to prove the bids before we can actually, he's appropriating the money, but we're not spending it.
And when we get to that, I think Larry's going to discuss that piggyback with Green County, is that right, or Greenville?
We possibly could do that.
Okay, we'll talk about it when we get to that, I got you, okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? You've heard the motion to approve the regular agenda with those changes, any more discussion? Are you ready to vote? Alright, cast your vote. Any member wish to change their vote? If not, Madam Clerk, announce the vote. Thank you. Next up is comments from the chair. I would like to comment, there's two people out in the crowd that are special to me and who got me with the political bug that I have today, and that's Ms. Jamie Wheeler, Ms. Catherine Ayers. They were both, they're chaperones on our eighth grade trip to Washington, when we went from Jacksonville Middle School, and that's where I got the political bug. And I just want to say they mean a lot to me, and they mean a lot to me while I was in school, and I appreciate them being here. And also, I would like to talk about Michael Orick. I think that Mr. Orick, the last couple of years, I don't think that, you know, after the Dr. Martin situation, you were the right person at the right time to lead us through that, and I appreciate your leadership on this board, and I appreciate everything you've done for the board and for our kids and for our community.
Well, thank you.
I appreciate that.
I'll pay you later.
Director's monthly report. Director Poston.
Congratulate both of you.
Thank you, Josh.
Appreciate Mr. Orick's worth, going to look forward to this. What is this? Let me say this, holiday Sunday, I've been in the annual superintendent's training in Gatlinburg, and I'll play Monday. And then today, I left after early today, and then going back tonight, we go there tomorrow. And listen, you get an opportunity to talk with a lot of directors, have breakfast with them, lunch with them. I'm very thankful to Camel County for what we have in this county, and some, listening to some of their concerns that they have, we've been blessed. We see a lot of the positive things that place, and you know, some problems that we have, they just, they don't even compare to some of the things that are happening someplace. We, I feel like we've got a group of teachers and employees and persons that love the kids, and I believe there's consensus now going to try to do what we can to improve the educational status in this county, I believe with all my heart. But I will thank you guys for everything that you're doing in that regard. Mr. Jeff and I were talking before you all were in the session. Today, we cut the ribbon on a brand-new building, as a new, it's a new venture for Camel County. Just a few years ago, September 11th, two huge buildings came down in the United States of America, we're still feeling the effects of that, still talking about that. It changed our nation. We should never ever forget what we've got, the freedoms that we've got. We should never ever forget what people have, the cost people have paid, not sure that we've got those freedoms. We've got kids now that's coming to this new structure, let's don't forget why they're there, why we're here to serve them. Let's make the best of that structure like we should all of our structure. We can stay united, working as a front for the cause of these kids, we'll continue to see more good things happen. And by the way, you're going to see what my nightly reading has been, I've been up there from 11:00, 12:00, 1:30 in the morning, just had, there were two or three things that you all mentioned you wanted to talk about, so I spent some time on it. First, first page there is the meet and greet schedule, we try to get into each district at least once, and our first district only has one school, so we'll be going back to Valley View in March. And then the third district only has one, that's Camel County High, we'll be going there in January, Lord willing. And then we'll be going to Jellicoe High School in October, Jacksonville Middle in December, February, the following minute. And so, we'd encourage the board to go with us, those meet and greet sessions, four to six. And then, Mr. Miller and several principals have asked me about the, I don't know, principals, but potential principals, asked me about the school leadership academy that we talked about last year. And we've got a plan in here, hopefully that several of the people that are interested in being school leaders in Camel County will take part in this. We encourage those that have leadership endorsements, or those that presently taking those classes, become part of these classes. They're trying to have one of those, every month basically, for about an hour and a half, and encourage those to take part in them. And then this last page, now this is based on information from star students, student membership, and really, truly, it would take probably a workshop to go over some of these figures. And this afternoon, I walked in the office and got the new numbers, and they were laying on the desk, I don't know that it's changed a whole lot. But once, you know, we're funded on the 2nd, 4th, 6th, and 7th, I believe, is that right, Jim? That's true. Of course, all the information on the class sizes, preliminary reports, we go in from Jack's office. Some of the things that might just need to happen is let DM, the school approval group, see if we are lacking in any one area. I know last year, we only had one exception, and that was at LaFollette Elementary, and we were able to correct that rather quickly. And so, I do one, what we need to do is let some of these, as they are before, let's see if there's any exceptions. There's a lot of discussion on how the BEP and the standard recommended maximum averages and allowable maximums in those classrooms affect the different classes. But if you look at this document that you've got here, it's about as close to that as it could be, based on what we have. And I'd love to, I don't, Ms. Tammy and Ms. Pamela in Nashville for the supervisor meeting tomorrow, next time, Mr. Nifert, please, Nifert. And they'd be, Ms. Tammy would be a real good asset to help explain some of the numbers too, if you all want to have a workshop and detail that, understanding that what this is all about. Give you some midnight reading too.
Recognize Jeff Marlowe, Director of Finance, Mr. Marlowe.
We got the 6312 year-end closed last Friday, and got the budget rolling for the 1213 year. So next month, you'll begin to receive your monthly financials. On the budget amendments, we have six budget amendments to be acted upon. And I'll keep for five, can we now review them individually, or you can take a motion individually, collectively, or collectively for it, depends what you'd like to do, and that's how we'll do it.
If you all get just a description individually, Mr. Marlowe, if you don't mind.
Resolution number one deals with taxes being reallocated amongst the varieties of different property taxes. As you guys know, we've been battling the exact delinquency rate, and this recognizes a increase in collectibility, so a decline in delinquency, which means current property tax will go up and delinquent property taxes will go down. And as you can see, it's a big amount of money, but going up approximately $20,000, and the other one coming down $20,000, zero sum and net gain across the four varieties of property taxes. Amendment number two is one that record and I've discussed a minute ago, it deals with the sale of the old Donnel Court property, the recognition of those proceeds, the appropriation of, fortunately, those proceeds covering things, which we already acted upon, which was the advertising expense and survey expense. And then the use of appropriation, the rest of those companies for the cameras, the buses, and GPS systems for the buses, was $17,500 of the total, being realigned from five different places. Again, recognizing workers' compensation insurance, saving $6,500, the building contents insurance of 1,100 being 7,600 of that amount. Resolution three is recognition of insurance recovery proceeds for... Resolution three is recognition of insurance recovery proceeds for R alarm systems at Violet Elementary School. $5,390.31 of revenue being recognized, and $5,390.31 of appropriations happening. Resolution number four is a reconciliation of the anticipated dead changed equity position associated with, you know, he's talking about the LaFollette Learning Academy. I have it from a college school. There was $5,898 used between our cut-off date of about June 2nd and June 30th, and this reconciles it back to what actually happened, gets those funds correctly reconciled, and $12,13. And then the last amendment is relative, trying to put three positions into play in the different school fund. I had sent out a letter to you all probably about three weeks ago now, or when I was doing the analysis of the non-school budgets, that I went ahead and did the analysis of the school fund and identified $102,000 of savings. The biggest line share, about $56,000, $7,000 was from, $5,200 from interest expense savings based upon the estimates we had for the energy saving program versus what the bonds actually sold for. Another $36,000 from natural gas over the six-year analysis of the appropriation versus the actual spending there, $13,814 from insurance savings from getting primary liability insurance. And then a reduction of $37,147 from capital outlay fund, and that allows for the hiring of those three additional positions.
Mr. Marlowe, do we have, do you have a number? It is in here, isn't it, in these figures, of how much we have with capital outlay?
I do. It's not in these figures, but
Three forty, three twenty-eight.
The actual capital outlay balance as of yesterday is available is $334,895.
What'd you say, Jeff? I'm sorry.
Three, three, four, eight, nine, five.
Eight, nine, five.
And that's the sum of those amendments.
You heard the explanation from the Director of Finance, and he wants the pleasure of the board. Make a motion, we approve the amendments, as read. Motion by Mr. Hills, there's a second.
Second.
The motion is to approve 9-1 through 9-5, segmented by Mr. Ork. Any further discussion? If not, cast your vote. Any member wishing to change their vote? If not, Madam Clerk.
Ford, yes. Barge, yes. Collins, yes. Crickmore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Wilson, yes. Miller, yes. Parker, yes. Luther, yes. Questions?
All right. Next on the agenda, reviewing the bids. Mr. Marlowe.
We have no wish to review, Mr. Chairman, but Section 8, we have a request for permission to advertise for four different items. Do you wish to vote on these individually or as a group?
It's the pleasure of the board.
I move, Mr. Chairman, to approve all four.
Motion by Mr. Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second to request for bids. Any member wishing to change their vote? If not, Madam Clerk, reveal the vote.
Ford, yes. Barge, yes. Collins, yes. Crickmore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Wilson, yes. Miller, yes.
Hard to say. Lawson, Wilson.
Parker, yes. Luther, yes.
Thank you.
I mean, we don't have anything to talk, and that will take you up to Ms. Fay.
All right. Update from Ms. Fay Comer regarding individual school activity funds.
Well, I hope everyone saved their reports for August from the campus school activity count. Are there any questions? As promised, it was longer this month, 44 pages. Yes, sir.
If I can get there. There was an item under football gate proceeds at Campbell County High School.
Yes.
It was like $60-some-hundred.
Yes.
And then it was taken out. Where did it go?
It went into the regular football account because that's their operating plans.
Okay, so it did go back.
Back into the football. Yes, that's their operating plans, and they have those plans to account and through their purchasing orders.
But it did go back.
Yes. Went back into the regular football. Yes. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Fay.
Thank you.
Now, Section 8, Items for Action, consider approving Biology 1 as a weighted AP course at Campbell County High School. Mr. Knifer.
I thought, well, this way, or this way, we would discuss this at length, and with any time you can add a weighted class rigor to the classroom, to your curriculum, it is a positive, it's positive for the schools, the communities, and also when you're entering college, that carries along with that. The one concern we have, if we weight this class, we probably need to do it with next year's entering freshman, and Ms. Wheeler or Mrs. Ayers would be more than happy to leave on that because you, if we don't do it that way, we can get a mix. We want everybody entering with that opportunity on a level playing field. But the ability to have AP Biology as a weighted class would be a positive for our high school.
I'd like to hear Jamie's opinion on it.
Ms. Wheeler.
Well, we looked at several different things, and looking at, you know, we've had students in the past, we have an AP, we've had an AP Biology class before long. I mean, several, several years, it's not been weighted. And we've got students at school that have taken the AP Biology class, and it hasn't been weighted. And we feel like that we need to look at just incoming freshmen next year, giving them that opportunity, just like what I said, to visit them on a level playing field.
Jamie, I guess it is the thinking, if you go back and try to retro, what are some of the, what are some of the consequences of doing that?
Well, if you dig that, you're looking at, I don't think you'll figure that out, because you're looking at students, it can change a lot of things, like the students that have already graduated. It can affect scholarships of those students that have graduated. It can, valedictorian, it can change that. So you really have to be very, very careful with that, and I would not recommend doing that.
I wouldn't either, because we got into that, if you remember, Mr. Lawson, a few years back, and it was a real problem.
Jamie, what you're saying is to be faced in, excuse me, be faced in and all students will be on the same page, you know?
Yes, sir.
So that all have the same chance.
Is this just the one class, or all?
Well, it will be starting with the freshmen coming in next year, and all students and the rest. We give an opportunity for that.
What about the history and the English?
Those are still stayed shut.
Still the same, they're already, they're already waited.
Yes, sir. They're already waited. We have five weighted classes right now.
So we have five AP classes, and all five are weighted?
Yes.
What's the, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Poston, we got their recommendation. Do you concur with starting it next year? If that be, if that be the case, I'd like to put that in form of the motion to make it effective for next year's incoming freshmen.
So moved by Mr. Burge, is there a second?
I'd like to second the motion.
Segmented by Mr. Rutherford. Any further discussion? If not, cast your vote. All votes are in. Anyone wishing to change their vote? If not, announce the vote.
Ford, yes. Barge, yes. Collins, yes. Crickmore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Wilson, yes. Miller, yes. Parker, yes. Luther, yes. Questions?
Thank you. Item B, approve the 2012-2013 volunteer coaching list, and it's attached and in your, in your packet. So moved, Mr. Chairman. Moved by Mr. Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Segmented by Mr. Burge, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask if all these coaches have their background checked, and have they had their three-day training or what, you know?
They've had their background checked, so they have to have the check to get on the list, so.
What about the?
Mr. Bruce, you just, the question Mr. Rutherford has, have they had their class, the volunteer coaches?
At the elementary level, we just did that in mind. At the middle schools, they will come offline to do that. They'll give them two years' time at the middle school to go online to do that. But at the elementary level, we just want them to do it.
I noticed on the list, or I
So we proved this year's
Like Valley View, I don't believe they had both coaches on there. And then there was another school that was just like maybe
If they didn't have both coaches, the company hadn't submitted those names.
So that will be later.
Any further discussion? I will announce before the vote, I have a conflict, as my brother's on the coaching list for Campbell County High School football. Are you ready to vote? Go ahead and cast your vote. Anybody wish to change their vote? If not, please reveal the vote.
Ford, yes. Barge, yes. Collins, yes. Crickmore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Wilson, yes. Miller, yes. Parker, yes. Luther, yes.
Thank you. Review and make recommendation on proposed gymnasium flooring at Jacksonville Elementary School.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve this.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second, discussion.
Richter, have we contacted the company, installed it?
Yes, we have.
What did they say?
That was installed by Shelton General Contractors in 2004. They subbed it out to Fincham Floor. Fincham Floor says that is a composite floor, it's sort of almost like concrete, and you can't hardly patch it. If you'll notice, I don't know if anybody's been up there and seen it, but there's actually places that are coming up, and you can't go in and just spread concrete to the point here. You have to patchily take the floor down, you have to pour it back, that particular floor, do a whole new paint job as well as you would a wooden floor. Keep in mind, what we have is the two-and-a-quarter maple boards, just like all the other schools have, and they have a much better residual lifespan than this floor up there. This floor was, I think, taught it as a maintenance-free floor. It may have been a maintenance-free floor, but its durability doesn't last. They only had one-year warranty, and
Is that, is that those dark areas on the floor? I want to burn a look down.
In the middle, you actually have a deal. There has actually been kids following and fell into the bleachers from the scuff of the floor, because when the tennis shoe hits it, it grabs the tennis shoe, and it's actually partially a safety issue. But you can't go in, buff it, you can't, like a normal wood floor, sand it, or whatever. I got an estimate, he did not give me a proposal, based on current prices, that floor would be around $90,000.
Existing.
Yeah. If you put back a composite floor.
Further discussion?
What did that floor cost? Does anyone know what it cost?
$59,000. Hold on just a second, Mr. Lawson, and I have this.
Let's buff it, just put it down in private.
Yeah. It's eight years old. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Marlowe.
This item, if approved, will need a language to go along with it that would, this company here and this proposal is piggybacking off of a proposal, bid for awards that they have in a different county, which is proper, but I asked Hill, the second one sitting here, if in fact these dollar figures had been verified, had to be compliant with those bid amounts that they already submitted. She said she hadn't. This is first I've seen it, so I haven't. So we'll have to make sure that these numbers here tie to that particular document in order to proceed without further debate.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Callow.
Is this floor safe to play on right now?
I haven't been up there. I've heard several, I've heard complaints about it.
This course, I've heard about it pretty much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Mr. Lawson, you know, he's been there, he knows what the situation is, and
Well, this is a lot of money. And I wanted to look at the floor, and there are some bad places on the surface of the floor. And now, this don't include bleachers or anything, does it? And I know bleachers can be repaired, our maintenance crew can repair the bleachers, but the hardware, the metal hinges and so on is the trouble there. But I was curious about repairing the floor without, you know, having to re-surface the whole floor. Is it impossible to take chunks of that out and re-pour that?
According to Mr., I forget the guy's name, the owner of Fincham Sports Board.
The one that poured the floor?
Yes.
I wouldn't want to take his work, because I was going to add the first item.
I agree. I just think it's
You know, the reason we come up with this, we visited a school in Maryville, and it was a top-rated school, and we lifted over, and they had that type of floor for an elementary school, because in elementary school, we don't emphasize just basketball. We have PE, and we have those smaller kids, and those smaller kids can't carry gym shoes to school and change shoes every time they go into the gym. And it was more of a playing surface to accommodate elementary students more than it was a hardwood floor to be a real basketball arena. That's where a lot of this came from, and it's surprising to me that this floor deteriorated as fast as it did. Could we put this off and get some more discussion on this and then find out more about the surface and
Mr. Chairman, I call the question. Mr. Miller's called for the question, which is a proper motion.
Well, I did have one question.
I won't do it.
I want to know where the funding, what was the source of funding for it?
Capital outlay.
There'd have to be the language that Jeff was referring to, I guess, in the, in the motion. There would have to be language in the motion designating where the money comes from.
Well, in this case, it's obviously the capital outlay item. It would have to come from capital outlay. There is no alternative. But you'd be using fiscal capital outlay.
Which is 338 now.
334,000, 800,000 dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I haven't seen the floor, I don't know what it looks like, but everyone here, most everyone here is sitting on a count fast right there. And I wonder if you just capital outlay money. I think we should fix that football field over there, because they can't play on the surface here, and we can't do nothing over there. And I brought this up last time, we have cut the waxing on it, I don't know what we have to do, I guess, I don't know, turn it back down. But we need to
He's got a call for a question.
Dressing room, dressing room, and bathrooms up there.
I'll go on the call. Mr.
Philhouse is finished, so we'll use that, but I'm not saying, Mr. Richter, don't do that up there, and I think And I think it's time to spend a little money over there and get this thing...
He's got a call for a question.
We got a football field over there.
Mr. Miller's called for the question, which is a two-thirds vote. Requires seven votes for the question to be called. And that's what we'll be voting on right now. So if you want, voting for the previous question is yes, voting no against the previous question is a no. Again, this is a seven vote required for the previous question.
So we're voting to stop discussion?
To stop discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I don't understand.
If you're ready for discussion to stop, you vote yes. If you want to have more discussion, vote no.
If I vote yes, it means put the floor down?
If you put no, if you vote yes, if you vote yes, that stops discussion.
I'll take the vote. Got you.
All right, anybody wishing to change their vote? Announce the vote. Okay, motion fails, so we're still in the discussion phase, four yeses and six nos. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Mr. Poston his opinion. We have, there's no question, we've got several projects that we need to sit down and sit down and discuss, that's what we own as priorities. And so I know you've got some of your schools, Mr. Collins mentioned Jellicoe. There's four or five projects right now that we're talking about, so we don't need to rush to it then. If board members in the Jacksonville district would like to look at it further than I understand. I know Valley View had that same type of floor and that was trampled down. They trampled that thing down and they gave me a kit. And they said, now, all you gotta do when these chunks come out is mix this mixture. Well, one day, I thought I'm gonna fix the thing. But when that part of it, the epoxy part, was as hard as a rock, it would took down and left it and used that stuff. So once it's tore up, it's tore up. It's hard to fix.
Since we're still on discussion... Yeah, Mr. Miller, you recognize?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, we put a new floor service at East of Follett last year. We put a new floor service at Jellicoe. They've gotten a new one this year because of damage. Put a new floor service at Campbell County High School. We've got a new school at Caraval. Valley View's got a good floor. This is not my district, but it is a safety issue. We have money in capital outlay. Capital outlay is for capital projects, in my opinion. There is a safety issue and we have the money. I would encourage this vote and put this floor down. You're not going to get it no cheaper. I just would encourage the vote.
Mr. Burge?
The real question, Mr. Park, is...
No.
There's no question, we're gonna have to redo the floors, like Mr. Poston said. And if we wait another year, you're looking at ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars more. So it's just a matter of whether you want to do it now for this amount or wait next year and pay ten, fifteen percent more, so. And like Director said, we have the money.
Mr. Wilson?
I was up there talking to Ms. Crutchfield and I may be under the wrong impression, but she said they was gonna have to play their games there. Jake felt interested.
Jackson Mills?
Yeah, Jackson Mills.
Z.
Is that right? Donnie, do you know that?
Their games there, I don't know, I'd say. I mean, there are several bad places because of the... That's what Ms. Crutchfield...
Further discussion? We're still in discussion.
Mr. Rutherford? I'd like to ask Johnny Bruce, have you checked the floor to see if there's a safety hazard or not?
No, I have not. But I will tell you this, I've talked to Ms. Crutchfield and they were going to do the new gym floor. And I talked to Mr. Rutherford at the middle school to be able to play their games over there. He didn't want to do the floor.
They're gonna use it in the interim, is what you're saying? I'm not against it. I mean, it's in our district, Eugene and I, and but we're sure that's the best price that we're gonna get on...
They piggyback, and we'll confirm the prices. Prater Flooring, when we did the floors last year, the only other outfit that did it was this Fincham Floor Company out of Sevierville. And they beat them hands down by thousands of dollars. So I'm confident that Prater's Flooring has given us the best price we can get.
How many beds do we get?
Well, this is not, this would be piggybacking off of a bid that Hamilton County did to get the best.
What you would think would is the best bid, that's right.
Yeah. You know.
Well, we got the one bid.
In the material I reviewed, Eugene, the Hamilton County school system performed a bid last, I believe it was last year, don't know how many of the dates, can't remember the year. They did a solicitation, I think they had four respondents to their bids. And Prater Flooring was awarded their contract in Hamilton County. And it's had a reciprocal agreement clause in the contract that causes Prater to honor their bid prices to any other school system that we should piggyback on top of that bid during that period of time. One of the things that, and this is all I've...
Would they come here and deserve this? Or would you just give them the square footage or what?
They've been here.
That, I don't know. That's the reason I'm saying about this proposal here. I don't know if in fact this dollar figure here are in conformity with their bids submitted down there. But if the board were to approve this and state that they're approving this process and whatever that price ends up being at those, assuming it works, then you could go forward with that price. And if it's the same, then you know the price. The only other thing that I can possibly add of personal knowledge, we did use Prater in the sites that Director was just talking about. And they were our low bidder. And the representative from Prater's has told my office that the pricing in Hamilton County was the best pricing that there was available. He said, you can compare it to what we charge you, you'll find that we charge them significantly less than what we charge you yourself. And just as soon as this contract lapses, we're gonna be where Mr. Burge said, something ten percent probably correct. Because that's what the conformity did.
So you think this is the lowest bid we've got yet?
I believe that it will be. And again, I don't necessarily know that these are those figures, but this company using that Hamilton County bid price, yes, I believe that.
Well, the whole thing is since the last two, three years, we've spent a lot of money on athletics, we've not spent very much on athletics. And this is a whole lot of money. And I'm for Jacksboro, I'm for Caraval, but I'm also worried about laying off 21 teachers and then building gym floors. I may change my mind here, I don't know, but that's the whole, we're not up here to try, I don't care about the bid politically correct and getting votes. I'm more interested in having a good school system. And that's what we're thinking about. And if that gym floor cannot be repaired and it's dangerous, of course, the kids shouldn't be on it. But we're gonna spend a whole lot of money here and we've been laying off a whole lot of teachers.
But a point of clarification, I've been on the board now 12 years and we've never, to my knowledge, paid teachers out of capital outlay. Capital outlay is used for projects such as, so it's either pay a little now or pay later or pay more. So that's the question you got. To my knowledge, we don't pay teachers out of our capital outlay. No.
Mr. Poston, last year you added five teachers, is that correct? Last year's budget after we approved the budget, is that not right, Mr. Marlowe? We're just finding the money.
Fund balance.
Wasn't it undesigned a fund balance?
Fund balance, yeah.
Rest of my case.
Director?
Mr. Marlowe?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
One of the things that, I don't specifically, and maybe one or two, the date that the validity of the existing Hamilton County contract expired, I don't remember what that date You may have the ability to confirm what you were last talking about, Eugene, without putting before approval in jeopardy for the price increase. And be able to search out whether or not you could make reparations to the existing floor. I agree that you wouldn't want the guy who did the floor previously to make those reparations, but you might be able to find something to work. That discussion last night's meeting at the commission, $3,500 sanitation truck that was $3,500 with the prognosis to spend $30,000 on said truck. Well, you certainly wouldn't want to spend $30,000 fixing that floor up there, which you could buy a new floor for $75,000.
I understand.
But I don't know that, and that would be good information to at least give you confidence in what you're taking action on. I firmly believe that the price from Prater's will be your best price if you decide that you are replaceable.
Director, let me ask you a question here. You said that the existing floor had just a one-year warranty? And that's what this is, a one-year warranty, right?
What, the new...
The new bid?
Yes.
One year. Is there any way, you know, we don't sit here and have the same problem in three or four years? Can we get an existing or extended warranty on the floor? Do we know that?
Sure you could, if you want to.
Mr. Marlowe?
So go ahead, Mr. Marlowe.
One thing, Director, from Mr. Chairman, Gail said she had the contract in place. If you guys were gonna take just a few minutes recess, you could go get, we could find out what's that timeline.
From Hamilton County?
Yeah, what timeline is. That would at least give you some clarity of whether you're right up against the subject.
I'm okay with it. I'm like the board.
I have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor to approve, so is there any further discussion?
Oh, they can amend their motion?
I need to... Yeah. Do you have an amendment or do you have... Well, they're gonna have to have the floor. There's no question about it. This year or next year. Let me say this too, that I was... There's a question about whether we're gonna have capital outlay money next year. And we were told yesterday that it looks like we're gonna get capital outlay money back. But that's a good...
Praise the Lord.
Our problem, Donnie, I'll interrupt you, is the present amount of money in our budget for capital outlay that started with 420,000, has nothing to do with earned money from the BEP form of the law. It has the fact to do with that's approximately $100,000 less than our stability provision funding was.
Vote. Please announce the vote.
Ford, yes. Burge, yes. Collins, yes. Creighton, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Wilson, yes. Miller, yes. Parker, yes. Rutherford, yes. Questions?
Thank you. Next on the agenda items for discussion, A, discuss principals learning academy. Mr. Miller?
I just wanted to put on there, Mr. Poston's given us this. It's explained for him, thank you. Glad to see it underway. Do you have a number of candidates you'd like to discuss?
Last year we had about dozen, I've had more. We've got probably those, maybe, I'd say six, seven. I think we have a good crack.
Pretty good.
Discuss teacher people ratio.
Mr. Poston, do you feel comfortable now, and it's hard, now the school's already started, that you have looked at everything as far as the elementary school level, as necessary, to alleviate, you know, the drowning?
It's been a very hard task, there are a couple questions, but the I don't know factor is if we'll pass muster on with the school approval. Now, if that happens, then we'll have to adjust it. Well, I know, I looked at several scenarios in fact where I would have thought it would not, and it did. And so one of the questions was asked to our new guy at East Tennessee Office and throw in any natural penalties attached to any of the oversized prices, and we said not at this time. But then you gotta understand, he's lived. And I'm not saying he doesn't know what his problems with capital property is, too. My experience has been with BEP and oversized prices, et cetera, et cetera, that why do you have these rules? That's not... Action has to be taken. I think we're in really good shape. There's still three that's borderline. And of course, the numbers are gonna shift some. Like I say, we changed from the first day of school until the 20th day of school, those numbers flashed white like crazy. They're pretty settled right now. Our numbers are up from this time last year, so we're looking at the possibility of adding in 25, 30, 35 additional students. On this paper that you've got, I can point you out the areas that you want, if you want me to now, or I, we're have to, I'll look at.
Go ahead.
You're gonna have to keep an eye on Caraval, K-3, put a little asterisk there, Jacksboro Elementary, K-3. All the elementary, K-3. When, you don't have to simply cause additional students to be moved down. Their issue had to do with, you know, if they changed their schedule, they ended up having split classes, which they didn't need. And they go, like their federal teacher teaches, a little bit of our class, and their schedule, a lot of their scheduling issues down the seven, eight area, we're gonna have to look at for Jacksboro Middle School, watch that one, watch that one, and it's borderline. And the high school is in good shape. Now, that's the four areas that need to be moved down. And once it goes through, if they're ever going to start again, we'll have to come out and like this for Jacksboro.
Thank you.
Chairman, I can go?
Yeah, Mr. Kent, try.
Mr. Poston, you've got the penalty. Penalty, you have to do it. There is no penalty, so it's stated, certified by your student, and the suspension under BEP, that if you go over a number on enrollment, you have to immediately provide extra teachers. So the reason there's no penalty is you don't have any flexibility. It has to be that.
The last year we had one situation that was like 0.5 of a person. That was at LaFollette Elementary. Do you have a care of that?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Poston, do we qualify for a number of teachers by the system or by the school?
By the unit.
Each school?
The way that they described to me, K, like K-3, that's a unit. And then 4, 6 is a unit. And you...
That's kind of why now, when you say a unit, that's all the students in grade K-3 through out Carroll County.
It's school. It's school.
Each school, it's not, the unit is a school, not a county.
Right. And you can't be county, simply because you may have a situation where that, let's say the county earns, say, let's say 40, you use that number. You could get down there and the law says you can have a split class here, you can have a split class there, whatever, and then in K-3 would be different than 4 through 6. Mr. Dursley in Nashville, years ago, I remember we would do the BEP, you would get the average like from K-3, that's separate, then you'd do the average of 4 through 6, you'd add those two together. You can't do that. You have to do each individual separate. So in other words, if it's, say, you earn 4.5 teachers, you round it up to five. Then the next one, like 4 through 6, you earn like 6.8, you round it up to seven. You can't combine those two numbers and get the number of teachers. You have to take each unit separate. It is by split. And that's where the, you have, where the issue's coming. I know Mr. Richard, I was showing him some of the data today, and he was getting to understand my world, and I was understanding his world. See, BEP numbers are all about funding. And then you got your recommended maximum averages and the allowable, actually, that's all the rules and regulations require. It's two separate levels.
Well, I know one principal, Mr. Rutherford, at Jacksboro Middle School, had made a request that he was having a real scheduling problem if he didn't get one additional teacher. Did he get that teacher?
Yes.
Okay.
And the one, and here's...
Okay, then one other question he asked me. I'm just passing that on. Jackson Middle School and LaFollic Middle School, according to these numbers, are exactly the same, isn't it?
Yeah, real close.
Jackson may have five more. Is that right?
Uh, LaFollic Middle, I think, still eight more now, on the second. Now, the numbers, they're like LaFollic Middle, you have like one sixty-one, Jackson Middle had one seventy-one in grade six, but then you get over to grade seven and eight, and LaFollic Middle had three fifty, I'm sorry, I was putting them up here pretty big on that.
So Jackson has two more.
Jackson's got two more.
Two more.
They have. All right, what happens? LaFollic gets six, Jackson's and Jackson's gets five.
That just worked for our bodies.
We want to be five balanced.
And there are several other areas, in your words, that could be challenged on.
That's what Mr. Rutherford's asking me. He needs some help cleaning school up.
I agree.
Next on the agenda, discuss balance of payment due to Ralph Davis for completion of work performed at Widoke Elementary School.
I had to put on again, Mr. Chairman. Just like to have the discussion of what we intend to do to that. We still don't, we still have never paid him. Put it on there and see if he's ever going to get paid.
Mr. Marlowe, I want to address it for three in the sense that it was owed directly to be paid several months ago, so we had some issues with whether we didn't afford the check. I said I want to pay.
The discussion is still exactly where it was vice left in the Board of Education. The project ordered by the school system is not the work completed by the contractor. If the Board of Education is desirous of making a payment for something different than what they ordered, they will need to make a motion saying that they wish to accept what they receive, not what they ordered, and vote on that. And at that spot in the road, the invoice could be approved for payment by the director of schools, and I will then process it. That will mean it has been a firm decision of the Board of Education to pay the full value for less than full value of what they received.
What's the outstanding balance?
Present, the total is ninety-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. It's been paid forty-four twenty-five.
What, did I understand it right? It was a ramp that he built?
There was a couple of different things. One of the bigger issues was the ramp, and there was a farm marshal's report associated with the lack of usability of that ramp. Now, my understanding, and this is second-hand information, this part, that Wildoak Elementary School is no longer using the outside facility, so it's a ramp to no avail.
Bridged to no avail.
Mr. Chairman, there is, might be a little bit of disagreement on what we did receive. Mr. Davis has said that he gave exactly what he's instructed to build. One thing that we did do after that is we had the architect to resubmit the ramp to the State of Tennessee for approval. We have that approval. It is approved. The only difference of reason why the state farm marshal here, Ms. Burkhardt, did not accept it is because she said it was not a new ramp, but an existing ramp when it was reviewed. Now, that's technicalities. Mr. Davis did an outstanding quality work on this, and I think that he should have been paid a long time ago. Again, this is not my district, but I think it'd be right to pay him, and whatever we got to do to get that.
Jeff, it doesn't take a board vote. Donnie can pay him, is that right?
No.
It does not?
The whole study is, we have a proposal from the contractor, and the proposal from the contractor specifically states the work that's to be performed. One of the items on the proposal is installation of a handicap accessible ramp or whatever. That isn't the case. That's not what we got. How this first started for me was I received a phone call from the then janitor at Wildoak Elementary School, a man named Bob Cooper. And he called my office to say that the work was anything but quality work, that the scope of work that had been performed in addition to being efficient in quality was not the scope of work that he was there when conversations transpired relative to the work that he performed. I then notified Don to say, this is the report I got about such and such. I have all those communications in my possession. And Don said, we'll check into it, see what's going to happen. Soon thereafter, the next thing happened was, I received communications, that it was okay. I said, well, that's good. I'm glad all got solved. The next thing that happened after that was received notification from the farm marshal's office that said, it's absolutely not okay, and detailing what was wrong with it. And then the Board of Education had to have the architect firm submit documentation back to the state to get a, I think it's a letter corrective action or something like that. The next communication I get is from the director of school stating that the maintenance department is the party who is actually going to fix the remaining work, corrected stuff. At that point, we had a situation where the board, all employees, if in fact it got fixed, fixed the problem, not the contractor, more entangling it in a net. So the only way I know of to solve, and it's the same thing I talked to you last time we had the discussion, the board is simply going to have to vote to say, we are aware that it isn't what was proposed, but we want to pay him anyway. And vote. And that's all that I know to do to solve it, because I can't, in my capacity, pay it under any other scenario, because it puts me in jeopardy of having knowledge for what I believe to be knowledge, that it is less than what all the documents say, and your guys are just going to have to vote to say, it is less, but it's okay. We're going to pay him.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cretemore.
Go ahead, Mike.
No, go ahead.
Well, I'm just, can I make a motion that we pay Mr. Davis what we owe him for the job that he's done?
You have to have specific language in it, that you're going to accept it the way it is for the work that he's performing. It can't be paying what we owe him, because that's the whole focus of the problem. It has to be that you're going to pay him for what he did and-
We'll make a motion that we pay him for what he did. We understand it's not exactly what was in the, I guess, the paperwork, but pay him for what the work he's done.
It's a proper motion.
In accordance with the amount already that we had on the person. Ninety-eight fifty.
Proper motion, segmented by Mr. Collins.
Any question?
Any discussion?
Yeah.
I just want to, Mr. Miller and I went up there after this big thing was going on, the director, Eddie, pulled out what we had to do to correct the suit of farm marshal. My knowledge, he got with Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis went up and done this one.
That is correct.
Donnie, what's your recommendation? I'm just going to ask you a point-blank question. Do you think the board needs to pay Mr. Davis?
Yeah, I mean, here's the reason. There was more involved than just the ramp. There were inside walls, inside plans, and it was a combination of other school projects that were involved with that, and our maintenance committee had to get involved. And this summer, they were-
Hard to hear about it.
They were building a wall as farm marshal had indicated should be built, and one of the contractors, well, that wall didn't need to be completed like that now, simply because of the changes in how the building, we're needing to build and design. So we don't need that trailer out there now, as they did in court. And so we were able to get to make the changes in the building, and that's for continuation. The maintenance committee were involved in there. They did help, Mr. Davis did help the maintenance committee do some work.
So he did help them do some-
Yeah, he did help them do some work.
Now, once we pay this four thousand, whatever it is, that gets rid of the issue completely, right? Okay.
All right, you ready to vote? Motion was made by Mr. Cretemore, segmented by Mr. Collins. Come on your vote. Anybody wish to change their vote? If not, please announce the vote.
Greg, yes. Barge, yes. Collins, yes. Cretemore, yes. Hill, yes. Lawson, yes. Wilson, yes. Miller, yes. Parker, yes. Chris, yes.
Thank you. Discuss legal matters. Mr. Kentrell.
Oh, God.
Recognize school board members. Mr. Collins.
I know we set aside ninety-nine thousand dollars for all turn to school. That Robert Marlowe and Mr. Rutherford said about ninety-nine thousand dollars.
Hang on up there. Ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and ten dollars back.
I think about three or four thousand dollars just gone. I don't know what's going, who's authorized to spend it. If we can spend it like it's going, we won't have all turn to school. Somebody has to prove it, is what I'm saying.
The only thing I show, Sarge, that has been proposed, changed from the ninety-nine, sixteen, is nine hundred and sixty dollars that is paid for in near and certain, which somebody is over here. That should leave you ninety-eight, six fifty. Something in that ninety-eight figure, that's in the three hundred and eighty thousand.
That's a good question to ask. I think, no, I think, I know it's a budget. No, I don't, you're very asking, so it's a thousand dollars.
Ninety-nine, sixteen, less nine, sixty, that's going to be your ninety-eight, six fifty. Now, my report was ran yesterday, so there could have been a purpose order or something done today, but I don't think-
I'm not looking.
Anything else? Mr. Collins?
Again, when we, all these air conditions down at schools, we need to notify the maintenance committee and tell them to check in with the principal, because they might lose some more room that went out that night. If they come in there, got the window behind the hospital, they don't check in with nobody when they get it fixed, they leave. Or if they fix it and not, they leave that without saying, well, I don't know where the park, principal don't know what they've done. And I think we'll check in with the principal, when they come in and they leave.
That's sad.
But they're doing good, right?
I'll say go. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Lawson?
There's still one question I'm asking. What is the average ACT score with the Campbell County High School, Jellicoe High?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I can call both schools and get the guidance people and get that for us.
Do what? Can't hear.
I can call both high schools and get-
Well, I've been asking for six weeks. How about calling?
I'll give it.
All right, I'd like to know.
I know we're writing number forty-nine, this is fifty.
Well, I hope we're above the limit, Captain.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. Mr. Hill? Mr. Ward?
The only thing I have is, and I meant to mention this early on, last month, we had two evaluators here evaluating the board. One was from Anderson County, one was from Scott County. The instrument contained twenty-eight questions, just so the board will know. Scott County scored the board a perfect four out of four, and Anderson County scored the board three point six three. So just FYI.
Mr. Cretemore?
When's that?
I just want to thank you to the board for your vote last year.
Mr. Burge?
No.
Mr. Rutherford?
Hey, Gail.
I don't have any money to pay you Homer, I'm not going to pay you.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Mr. Miller?
I'd like to support that statement, they'll say it likely outstanding, Chairman. He was a great leader.
Thank you.
And I think y'all will do just fine.
Thank you.
And he looks a little better than you.
I appreciate that. It's a lot lower on this seat.
I just want to again say thank you, and I want to thank Homer too for his years as vice chairman, the last couple of years. So anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
We're adjourned.
Sheriff Marlowe, if you have things that you would like to provide, call the sheriff department, but contact with them to get those out. It's for all elementary students in counties that are being held at the Carroll Elementary School Saturday, August the fourth, 10:00 a.m. And then tomorrow night at five, five o'clock, budget buying, please, and Thursday night at five o'clock.
Five o'clock, so God, please.
We're adjourned.
Hey.
Plenty of games. I'm going to sell boxing gloves next to me. I think I'll bring some boxing gloves next to me and sell them.
Be careful.
See you, Boomer.
See you, buddy.
See you, Boomer.
Take care, Alan.
They're opening mountain halls since the bell rings, that's the time some people coming out. It could be a hazard, I don't know, but we need to get maintenance to check it. I believe Mr. Chippwood has already requested the Kansas big chainsaw at open ends. I don't know whether he has or not, but we need to check on that. And we need to get ready or just mail it to the Hill Valley. This lady's got a little problem trying to find a place to sew a whole teacher's meet so she will be at the hall or pull a truck. She'll work with it, see where she got it with that, see what we can do with that.
That's the whole about it, opening the hall.
Yeah, I can't open it.
I would like to have that. Keep in mind, the new fire marshal we have now, anything you do has to have a draw. You have to have what's called DOC, or Yellow Letter, at the intent of what you want to. You don't, you go to these schools quite often. And the reason why we had so much trouble at Widoke wasn't so much what we did, it's because we didn't speak to the staff. So anything we try to do at this point on has to be submitted to her, or she's going to, she's going to give us a hard go. And we don't want her on her hands after, because she's already getting ready to recommend something at Campbell High School, and I hope she don't, and I'm not even going to breathe doing that. So we just need to do what we're supposed to do now, because we're- So, we just need to do what the folks do now, because we've cost a ton of money if they have to go back in there and do stuff. Not to say we can't do it, I'm just saying we have to, have to do it a little different usually, rather than just going in there and do it.
You suppose if we can't do it, it's just-
Yeah, I'll get Mr. Morris over here.
Mr. Lawson? Mr. Creepmore? Burge?
I just wanted to ask, Mr. Knott, it's that time of year, end of the school year, a lot of teachers asking about placement and how that's going to work. I was going to wonder, seems like there's some, maybe some misinformation floating around, I was wondering if you cleared up on how placement and things are going to work this year?
Oh, May 4th, it's part of the thing, where there's also part forward, you have a form letter that we can figure out if they place here. And in that letter, it specifies, you have school's deck, your position, and also it states, you need funds and enrollment for. From that, I mean, there is a vacancy at school A that will be posted on the list, or like you say, that's the max position at school A, that will be posted on the list. Then anything that has the threat taken to the, with the threat, or go to the threat store, interview, and then, of course, that would have to come back to the director of school for approval.
I'd like to add to that, and ask a question, you know, we did have that finance meeting a little earlier, the mass, I think, May 4th. And we were, we were requesting that Donnie was going to give us an update on what we looked at as far as how many pictures were placed and recut and all that. Is that still going to happen on May 4th, or are we going to get any kind of information like that at any point in time?
I can take that back to the rest of those.
Because, I mean, I'm with y'all, a lot of people relax when what's going to happen, and we keep pushing, information line out, if it's going to happen in the dark, we don't even know that or not.
We didn't see BEP numbers in this week.
How many, how many, the process for filing for retirement things, that period's come and gone, how many, how many did we have filed with papers?
There's a lot, I think, for some.
Some are staggered, where they may not retire now, and they're seeing some.
We'll try to have all that at that May 4th. Homer? Dave? Miller? All right, we have most adjourned.
Most adjourned.
We can sign out this name here?